But they don't seem to be upset at this moment.
This seems different than that.
There was, Nick was saying there was a projector issue, it was the brightness, so they changed the brightness.
It was only...
Mari, is the projector shining on you in the same way that it was last time?
I appreciate you guys caring because it really felt like an interrogation light last time. But, um... Okay, thank you everybody. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Westford School Committee on Monday, September 30th, to order. This meeting is being recorded. If you're able, please join us as pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're doing roll calls, votes tonight because Bill is remote. We're gonna move to the consent agenda. There's a document for meeting minutes in there, as well as two payroll and a payroll and an expense warrant. And any questions or discussion on consent agenda? I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
That's it.
Second.
All in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye. Next up is public comment. A reminder that public comment for any item or topic on or off the agenda is always available near the top of the agenda for individuals to share their thoughts. Speakers will be limited to two minutes per person. Please use public comment even if you refer to something later on the agenda. Virtual public comment is available through Zoom. Raise your hand and you'll be promoted to panelist and unmuted or in person at the microphone, and we'll give a minute to see.
I have nobody online.
Oh, okay. Apparently, no one's on Zoom tonight, so, and only our guests are in the audience. So, we'll skip on right by and move to informational updates. Start with the superintendent.
Thank you. This last week, Jeff Goodwin and I, Director of Facilities Jeff Goodwin and I, met with some members of the MSBA to actually have a different conversation other than the Robinson. They're trying to do a study throughout the state to look at heat pumps and transitioning to heat pumps in schools, and the NavNassett School was actually selected by them to just do a study. So, they're actually gonna be coming to visit the NavNassett School, look at the building, look to see, so that they can collect data so that as they're creating this program for the entire state, they're trying to find all these different model schools that are different, you know, of different ages, different sizes, different grade levels. And so, NavNassett was on their radar based on data that they collected a number of years ago. So, it was just an interesting thing, so I thought I would share that with you because it'll benefit us in that we'll get that data.
Sure.
So, they're gonna do, they're gonna look at it, they're gonna look, and then they'll share that data with us. It doesn't mean anything as far as programs or anything to that extent, but it's just an interesting thing that I thought.
So, they're not installing a heat pump?
No, 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 no. They're actually looking at...
Or giving for free.
Giving us anything for free. Matter of fact, there's, they made it very clear that there's no obligation on their part. They're just hoping to collect data to get an idea as to what they could be sharing with other schools, which is interesting. We have our Robinson School Building Committee all set up. There's one little change that's gonna happen that the Select Board somehow had Tom's name instead of Valerie's name. So, the name, although you had all already decided that Valerie would be the representative, I think they just swapped the capital planning committee names. And so, what was submitted to the MSBA today was...
Because of the deadline.
Because there was, the deadline was today, so they needed to submit the full committee, everybody's names and information, just so that they know that we're moving forward in that process. But they also have ways in which you can communicate with them to change any of that. So, the Select Board will then meet again to update that, and then we'll communicate that information to the MSBA. A number of our schools have been having their, well, their open houses or their back-to-school nights, so I appreciate everybody's participation in that. I did get a couple of questions from families as to how those times have been established. And the goal is trying to find that balance between what works for families and what works for staff as well too, so that the evenings don't go as late as they used to go in the past. I know some of the schools were dealing with feedback that they had about the timing of these events, so we'll continue to collect information from people to find out how that goes. Another question that we get sometimes is how our SRO supports our elementary schools because we, I think people realize and understand that the SRO is primarily at Westford Academy, but Detective Bernadine supports all of our schools. And so, Christopher Lee shared with us that Detective Bernadine had actually just been at their school doing a cyber secure, a cyber awareness of digital citizenship.
Presentation.
Thank you, presentation. Like, I'm losing the word. Assembly is what I was thinking of, right? With the students. And so, that was just something that I kind of wanted to highlight to remind people that, you know, he does get the opportunity to go and visit different schools and work with, proactively working with staff and with students to build relationships and to share different information. And then, another thing we wanted to share was just, many of our schools participate, the PTOs, conduct these no fuss fundraisers, which I think has actually been a really popular thing. And so, those are starting to kick off, and so you might see that as the PTOs are communicating with families, different ways in which families can support their efforts at the school level. Did you wanna...
Sure. I got a couple athletic updates. First, the soccer team, both the boys and the girls, participated in a cancer awareness tournament in which they raised some money, so it was a great turnout, and a lot of thanks goes to them and their families and everybody that volunteered. And I'm not sure if we can bring up a picture that will show, yay, our unified basketball game schedule for the month of October, and you can see that we will have the first home game here at Westford Academy and on October 9th at 3:45. So, this is one of our players, Herschel, who's a Westford Academy student in our Roots Program, and he along with his teammates and classmates will be making Westford Academy proud, I'm sure.
Thank you very much. School committee updates. Any recent liaisons or subcommittee meetings you wanna share?
Got a couple. Grad requirements, working group met again last week. Continue to meet every two weeks. Some really good conversation. I think we're hoping to kind of narrow the scope of what we're really gonna be looking at soon. And then, just a reminder that on Saturday from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Westford will be hosting, as far as anyone can remember, their first ever band competition, marching band competition, featuring 16 high school bands plus two collegiate exhibition bands. So, the logistics of that have been very interesting to figure out how to fit that many vehicles and students, and all the spectators. So, it's going to be a really, really good showcase of the arts here in town. And as far as I know, they're still looking for volunteers, so if you're interested in stepping up, just let me know. I can get you in touch. And Westford should be taking the field at about 6:00 p.m.
Perfect.
Cool.
Thank you, Tom. Mari, any? Sean?
No.
Lori?
Westfest was very successful on Saturday.
Oh, yeah.
It was awesome.
I was volunteering. I saw Catherine there as well, and we heard that they were over 2,000 people there. It was a beautiful day. Everyone was having a lot of fun, and it was a great event.
And for people who don't know, the whole point of Westfest is to raise funds for the, for WEF, Westford Education Foundation, which gives grants directly to teachers to do stuff directly in the classrooms with the students. So, I mean, it's a massively worthwhile cause and...
There are some really creative projects that have been completed because of WEF.
Yeah, so, should say thank you to those volunteers and the parents because, I mean, it's a, it's a full-time job, and it just ran so beautifully on Saturday, so...
Yes.
And the sponsors.
The sponsors, yeah.
A bunch of corporate tables, which was cool to see.
Yeah.
Huge Westfordopoly.
I know.
Which is a Westford-specific version of Monopoly. It's awesome.
Yeah.
Instead of go to jail, it's like, don't get stuck by the train.
That's pretty cool.
You live in Abbott's area.
Very appropriate. You can buy muffins on Main for $210, you know.
Yeah, we're very excited to play. We have our own copy.
Yeah.
Was that it, Lori?
Yes.
Yeah, just policy, which we'll be coming back to.
And Bill, any updates?
Bill?
He blinked.
No, but just so you know, he's struggling with the sound through the Zoom at the moment for some reason.
Can you hear us?
He's saying he couldn't hear Courtney or Tom when he was speaking.
Okay.
Can you hear anybody?
I think he can hear us. Well, just about.
I said, can you hear us? I mean, he said no, so I don't know what that means.
Right.
Maybe he read your lips. It was just kind of funny.
I don't see anything else.
There's a glimmer of hope there. I go here, some of you guys for a sec.
Gotcha.
We can hear you.
Brief sec.
Can you hear us okay, Bill?
Now I can, yeah.
And we can hear you.
Was it on the speaker?
Perfect.
Okay.
So, do you have any updates? That's what I was the question.
The only update I have is that the school start time subcommittee is gonna meet later this week through the software. We've identified really one scenario where we can try to keep the buses. The number roots about the same as what we're currently riding at, and really that's shifting to a two-tier system if we want to achieve a later, later start time for high schools and middle schools. So, we're gonna explore that more, talk to, hopefully talk to Dee some more, have a discussion with Jen Piper, and yeah, that's all I got.
Thanks, Bill. My update is that finance is hopefully meeting later this week. Also, the special town meeting alerts have started picking up. That's Monday, October 21st at WA. Start time of seven, registration is early as six, I think, but the earlier the better. It's only 12 articles, I think, and a few of them will probably be part of a consent agenda. The first article is the firearm business zoning bylaw. And I think they're setting up three rooms for audio and visual with two assistant moderators. So, the cafeteria, sorry, the gym, the PAC, the cafeteria, and I think even the OX gym.
Really?
So... What time did you say again? I'm sorry. It starts at seven.
I thought there were four different locations within the building, so...
Well, there will hopefully be plenty of space, so we encourage everybody that can and is interested to attend. And I think on the town website, just as of today, is a optional RSVP survey that they did with the last one to try to gauge.
I'm gonna send that out tomorrow as well, too, with my October 1 update. I'm gonna share it with families.
Great.
We have a flyer, actually, Dr. Chu, you might add with that. It kind of talks about like booking your childcare, transport, and if you need any accommodations, you can request in advance, so I don't know if you can include it or something.
Could you share that with me?
I'll share it with you.
I haven't seen that yet. If you share it with me, I'll send it to you. And where is overflow parking again? Is that...
I think it's like, oh, actually, I wonder if they were gonna do the Abbott School with the shuttle. I haven't seen that info yet.
Okay.
But if I see it, I'll share it on my page and bring it up at the next, our next meeting, because we'll have one more.
Right, okay. That would be helpful.
Thanks. And student updates?
So, WA's clubs are up and running, and we're about halfway through quarter one, and so I believe our progress reports will be released tomorrow. Back-to-school night is on October 10th, right after the half-day, where parents will be running through student schedules and having an opportunity to meet the teachers, as well as a lot of admissions representatives from colleges and universities throughout the United States, as well as other countries have visited WA, hosting information sessions.
Kind of more on the social front. We, WA just came, WA football came off from a great win this past Friday. I don't know if any of you have heard, 49-2-0, whopping score. It was quite a, quite a night in the student section. It was also youth night, so it was really cool to see everyone come out on the field at halftime and kind of, you know, look back on what was. We also had that same day before the football game, we had the freshman tailgate and the junior barbecue, so good fundraising for both classes and, you know, exciting social events. We have our first advisory this Wednesday, so everybody's looking forward to that, you know, shorter class blocks, you know. Let's see, freshman elections are also happening this week. I made a comment on that a couple of weeks ago, but it is actually happening this week, so, you know, at least for my committee, we should be getting a new representative any day now. Picture Day is October 8th, so it's another exciting thing for juniors, sophomores, and freshmen, and possibly some seniors if they choose. We also announced that the formal, the fall formal semi, the fall semi-formal will be happening October 19th for upperclassmen only, juniors and seniors. We also have two international school trips this year, Costa Rica and Cambodia. Costa Rica will be April vacation, and Cambodia will be February vacation. They both go a little bit over that seven-day period. Cambodia, I believe, is, I wanna say 11 days, and Costa Rica is nine. I'm a part of the Costa Rica trip, so I'm very excited. Costa Rica is capped at 30 students. We have it filled, ready to go. Cambodia is still looking for more students, so we're hoping that that kind of fills and that Mr. Yang is able to take his students there. Mr. Yang is a Cambodian native, so it really is quite an opportunity if you go see his home country with him. And we also have, believe it or not, winter sport kickstarts. I know that's kind of funny to hear as we're in the midst of ball sports, but I know that, you know, hockey is announcing captains' practice, and I've seen a lot of basketball announcements, so, you know, we're thinking ahead. Students are definitely preparing. I know myself as a winter athlete, I am in training, but yeah, it's good.
Great.
Thank you. So, our first order of business tonight is welcoming the town DEI committee. Welcome co-chairs Joe Diamond and Anjali Rajput to present the mission and vision statements. Please join us at the table.
It's great for us to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. We haven't been with you in quite a while, and we actually wanna make it more of a regular visit, so maybe once a quarter, maybe, maybe once every semester. To update, tonight we'll update you a little bit. Before we get started, I wanted to pass out, these are notices about our podcast, and it was prepared by Wendy Bulleye on our committee. She's incredibly talented, Wendy. We just started talking about you, all the good things. And it's, it just details the podcast that we've done. Catherine Clear was featured in one of them. And we're happy to be able to do that, among other things. It's our pleasure to be here tonight to talk to you about our committee. Anjali will be talking about some of the things that we've done to update you. It's, you know, it's an honor to, to be able to carry out the charge that this committee and the Select Board gave us. And we're here tonight to ask for your endorsement of the vision statement and the mission statement. Before we get to those, though, we do want to update and actually provide a little more context. First of all, we've always enjoyed a partnership with this committee, and very much appreciate working with both Catherine Clear for us and now Bill McDonald. Bill, I don't know if you can hear or not, but thank you. Bill?
I can hear, yep.
He can hear us, yeah.
You can hear it, good, very good. We appreciate the connection and liaison. We also appreciate knowing that the school is committed to DEI, and we look forward to be able to work further with you in terms of bringing more and more of a broad view and a specific view related to DEI, to you and to the curriculum. We've been working for the last four years after having been created by, by the two boards, and we've learned a lot, and we've done a lot, and the vision and the mission statements sort of grow out of that experience. And we'll get into that a little bit, a little bit later. It's almost, well, looking back, if I was more prescient, I would have predicted that we would eventually wanted to talk about a vision statement and a mission statement as a group of committed residents. But here we are, and we are so pleased that the Select Board approved this two or three weeks ago.
On the 10th, I believe.
On the 10th, exactly. What we have done with the charge, is growing out of the charge, we developed two strategic directions. One is to raise awareness about and embrace diversity in Westford, and build on its well-known character as a welcoming community, and then to integrate DEI across town boards, governments, and commissions. That's sort of where we are in terms of our foundation, and then the vision and mission carry that further. But before we get into that, maybe Anjali can talk a little bit about what we've, some, some high-level summary of what we've done.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. As just Joe indicated, even though I'm gonna talk about a few bullet points, but there has been a lot of work that has gone beyond each, behind each and every activity. So, what we have done so far is we have created a multicultural calendar, and that is updated for one year. Very inclusive. Please take a look when you can visit. And then, we are also working on a resource page that includes information on most of those activities included in the multicultural calendar. We are also working with Kristen and the town hiring team to find out what are the inclusive hiring practices that we can incorporate within our town. We have already celebrated and we have participated in international block party, Juneteenth recognition. We were participating in India Independence Day. Then, there are a series of podcasts we record on one of the days, pretty much in the last, last Friday or Thursday of every month, and Joe has already shared the link for all of those podcasts that we have done so far. We also have planned a series of podcasts in the next few months as well. We participated in Pride Celebration with, in collaboration with Town of Acton, in Acton. We are planning an Indigenous Day, People's Day celebration on October 14th. We are also collaborating with Town of Acton, Town of Chelmsford, and other neighboring towns just to learn the best practices that they're incorporating so that we can bring them here to Town of Westford as well. And then, again, you will probably witness many more activities in the future as well. So, now I'm gonna pass it on to Joe to talk about, you know, we have done quite a lot in past year and a half, especially as far as DEI activities are concerned, but then we are thinking about how do they tie in, how we can bring the community together, and then outlining and connecting that with vision and mission statements. So, I'm gonna hand it over to Joe.
Thanks. Joanne Durr, who was going to be here, she led the work group to develop the vision and mission statement, so we want to thank her. She's traveling. I wasn't able to get back in time for the, for this meeting. We were able, went through a work group to develop a vision statement and a mission statement, which were then approved by our committee, and then we brought that to the Select Board, and now, and now to you. I did allude earlier to how those evolved, and I think, for me, it's important to sort of go through that a little bit more. We see all three of these as a piece. We see them as stemming from each other. And after the conversations we had with the subgroup and with the DEI committee itself, it became clear that we, based on our experiences and the insights we've gained from those experiences and working with the town and working with residents in the town, that we, we all sort of had a vision for Westford, and we wanted to articulate that. The vision itself is what we see for Westford in the future. It is perhaps idealized, but it is something that we aspire to. And it's based on the fact that Westford is a welcoming community already, very welcoming. And the mission itself is one way of articulating sort of the nuts and bolts, potentially, of how we would go about it. So, we're asking for your endorsement of both. I'll just read the vision statement. "Our vision for Westford is a town that embraces, celebrates, and draws strength from our growing diversity. Is an engaged and inclusive community boasting a town government whose practices and actions display a consistent commitment to equity, and is known by current and future generations as a welcoming place that fosters an abiding sense of belonging." So, that's, that's the way we see Westford. I hope, I hope you do too, and that's the vision that we're gonna continue to pursue. So, we, we humbly and with respect ask for your endorsement of both the vision statement and the mission statement.
Thank you so much, and thanks for the updates on the recent work. I know if, if there's been some updates and mentions of it at Select Board meetings, but I really appreciate bringing that to us. I know we have different viewers, right, and residents watch different meetings and stuff, so I appreciate bringing that to you. Sure. Any questions or discussions?
I just love the vision statement, and clearly, the fact you ended on that sense of belonging, which has been our kind of mantra for the last two or three years, it was so nice to see that incorporated in, but I really like it in just the whole piece. It's really, really nicely written, so, thank you. I know it's not always easy to create those because so many, there's so many input and everything, so I think you've really captured it really well.
Wendy was part of that committee as well.
Yeah. I'm not surprised.
Not surprised, yeah? No. I was gonna say, just to, for context, we often take things for two meanings of votes, but I would ask the committee to consider voting tonight since we have guests here. Go ahead, Mari.
So, I, I think that everything that you just described, Joe, about all the activities that you guys have done really shows how you have been recognizing diversity and fostering inclusion. My questions are about, in your mission statement, you talk about addressing bias and ensuring human and civil rights, which those are pretty lofty goals, but I'm wondering like what, what specifically you're thinking about in terms of this committee addressing bias and ensuring human and civil rights.
Can I take this question? So, in the past, there were some incidents by certain students, right, within the town, and we had actively gone and spoken with our police department, really figuring out what's happening, what are the actions taken to address those. So, as the, as there will be issues in the future that would probably occur, I mean, unfortunately in the town, we would take those topics under the discussion with either school committee or come to Dr. Chu and go to the administration, go to the police department, and figure out how we're addressing those actively so that they are not really getting repeated again.
I don't wanna forget Bill on there, but I wanna, did you wanna add anything?
Yeah, no, like, I mean, I, if you guys look to your, the side of the wall there, our STIP, our overarching mission and vision, and as well as the core values, I think many of the themes in our mission and vision as a schools resonates with the vision and the mission statements of the DEI committee of the town that's been drafted. So, just, you know, happy to be a part of this committee for the next year, and, you know, again, I think this is a worthy statement and one that is needed this time to guide this work and moving forward, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
What do you think is the biggest challenge for your committee?
I just feel that there are a lot of, we want to do a lot of things, right? And again, it's, it's just trying to figure out how do we prioritize. We become more impactful, accomplish what we want to undertake this year, and then plan for the few years. And I think our mantra has been just continuous improvement as well, so what we did last year, how we can do those better, and I'm gonna give an example. We, we have participated in India celebrate, India Independence Celebration for many, many years as a town, but this year, we took a really closer look on what are we missing, what is the participation rate, and how we can socialize it better. And few members of the committee went ahead and helped in the marketing material, Wendy being one of them, right, the leader. But apart from that, like, we really took the lead, and this year, the turnout was so much better, so much bigger. So, it is about comparing what we have been doing in the past and how we can do it better this year and in the next few years as well. this year and in the next few years as well.
Can I ask, actually, on that, just same topic, Angelique and Joe? You know, is there anything specifically that you think improved that kind of turnout in terms of, like, where you raised awareness of that particular event? I think it's one of the, the questions and topics that I feel has definitely come up in the last kind of year of, you know, with kind of the override and kind of getting that information out there when they were doing all the budget talks is, you know, there's particular groups within our community and how do we connect with them? Because they don't necessarily, you know, receive information maybe in the same way, or is connected, because I know everyone has busy lives and stuff. So I'm just curious if you have any thoughts on that.
Yeah, so I, I believe social media is a big, big thing today. People not necessarily go on town's website and look for information. Whatever comes through in front of you is what feeds that information. So I think we had taken a leap there. We use WhatsApp groups. We had shared some events on the Facebook. I think that really helped, and we continuously, we are looking at what can we do in the future events as well that will drive us at least more promotion of whatever you want to do, right? And I know what your concerns were in the past, Catherine. I'm trying my level best to, to bring other communities together as well so that they are taking more active role within the town governance as well.
I think the other challenge for us, Marisol, and you were actually, I think you were liaison for a while to our committee, am I right? I think so, yeah. Is, is to give expression to the backgrounds and the diversity that's, that is in Westford. I think, you know, we want to have a dialogue as much as we possibly can with as many people as possible in town so we can learn more about how to give expression of that diversity. And to, to raise that awareness, I think it also, along with what Angelique's saying related to avenues of communication, it's partnering with the town government. It's partnering with, with you all, and, and sort of taking advantage of the channels of communication that you have, this committee, the school system, town government, town manager. Because it's, I, I think it is, in some sense, a team effort. And, you know, we, we need to do a better job, notwithstanding Wendy's incredible talent. We need to do a better job, you know, taking advantage of all the ways that we can reach people.
Thank you.
And time is always a constraint. As you said, what is the challenge, like, the time, right? I wish we could have 24 hours, like, probably in eight hours, we could have accomplished more. We, we just, we just don't have that much time. Yeah, there's always more to do.
Just have one quick. The, the vision is great, you know, as we'll point out, it certainly, you know, dovetails well with the school vision and mission and whatnot. But I think part of the challenge is, as an outside group, to hold this committee, select board, you know, accountable to, to your own vision too, and make sure that you're helping to keep us guided along the, the equity and inclusion road. So I think it's a good resource and definitely a partnership that we should take on as a whole town, so.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Yeah, Joe and I were just talking recently about making this a little bit more frequent and building that mutual flow of, of mutual pipeline, I guess. So, in, in that spirit too, and I know, Angelique, your, well, quick bullet points, talked a little bit about things that had happened in the past. Is there anything coming up that you wanted to highlight or that you're currently working on for the future?
Some of these are ongoing, right?
Yeah, yeah. The podcasts are ongoing on monthly basis, and if you believe that there is a topic that you would like to touch upon, then we would love to have you, one of you as a guest. Another event is Indigenous People's Day Celebration that's upcoming on October 14th. And we would probably plan a few more things in the future that we haven't really discussed as yet. I know there will be a Darba, and there will be other activities within the school system, so we will try to see how we can best support those events as well, right? Socialize them, promote them. It's a collaboration. It's not only what DEI is doing, it's what you guys are doing and how we can help you socialize either events or material promotion, information, how we can partner better.
I wonder if a really brief update on the equity audit?
That's what, I was actually just going to mention that we're, so we're still in the process of conducting our equity audit with AIR, which is the American Institute for Research. And Bill will be able to provide more of this information at a future meeting for you as well too. But one of the big things that we still need to do is a root cause analysis event. And so when I was meeting with the AIR representatives a few weeks ago, one of the things I said is I want to make sure that we're doing it in a way that not only will, not only will the school committee be a part of it, we want it to be set up at a time, it'll be during a school day so that we can have students from Westford Academy participate in this. But I very much want to make sure that we get the invitation to the DEI committee as well too, so that any of the members of the committee would be able to participate, as well as just our community at large. But I want to, so I don't have the date yet, it's going to be, well, now we're practically, tomorrow's October, so it's going to be late October, early November. But we'll be setting that date soon, and it's, it's a multi-hour event where they're going to be sharing data with us that they've been collecting as they've been looking at our policies and all the different, all the different sources of data that we've shared with them. And then they'll be asking, they'll be facilitating the whole thing and asking small groups to then be asking questions about this data and what do we see from it? And so they'll have, they'll facilitate the whole thing, so I don't even want to anticipate what their guiding questions would be. But that's something that we've already had in the works, and so our intention has always been that we would be reaching out to the full committee, not just, we had, you know, one of your members was working with us on the working group and we selected AIR in the first place, but we'll get that, that date to you.
Thank you so much. And if you need help in promoting that to the diverse communities within Westford, then we would, we would do that, for sure.
Well, once we have that date, we'll, we'll share it, and we'll share it wide.
Absolutely.
That's great. The equity audit was, was on our list to ask you about. The other is we want to continue to work with you on specifics related to how we can help enhance the curriculum, which is already wonderful, but if there's a way that we can add some dimension to it, working with you. For example, we were so grateful that this committee, along with the select board, approved our recommendation that January be Holocaust Remembrance Education Month, and that January 27th be Remembrance Day, and that, and that to support raising awareness about that through the curriculum or during, during January. Happy to, happy to work with, with you on that and other, other aspects. Real quick. Great.
And just to circle back, you said there, I mean, I have seen a, an assembly? You know, that word's in my head. You're scheduled, you're working towards an event on Monday, October 14th, correct? 10:00 AM?
We are, yep, yep.
At the Town Committee?
At the Town Committee, yes.
So if anyone's radar put on your calendars, yeah.
We'll do our best to get the word out.
Yes, yeah. Any last feedback or questions on the mission and vision statements? Take a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Last call? Sean? All in favor? Sorry, Tom. Mari?
I'm sorry, aye.
Sorry, I messed it up. Sean?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I have an aye as well, thank you. And so you've been having a regular cadence of, like, the last Wednesday of every month. Those are public meetings, if anyone's interested, or any viewers are interested. Bill is our liaison. He's been doing a great job keeping me, myself, and Dr. Chu up to date with updates and stuff, and I'm sure he will continue to bring those updates to the committee.
And I think your next meeting is actually tomorrow night.
Tomorrow, it was canceled. It was canceled because of an unfortunate event last week.
Yes, so. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Thank you for the support.
More sooner than later.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Next up is Courtney's going to present the professional development plans for this year.
It's coming, it's coming, it's coming.
Catherine, remember it?
There we go. Okay, great, thank you. So professional development occurs throughout the year and each and every year. Some of this might include staff meetings, curriculum meetings with, at each building level, others are planned professional development days, as well as other events that need to be carved out of our school schedule in order to meet either a specific district or statewide initiatives. So this year, we have three full days and two and a half days that are devoted to our PD. And decisions about which topics are made usually come in the form of curriculum updates, district or statewide initiatives, or mandatory training. So as this year, you can see, elementary is going to continue to focus on the EL curriculum. As you recall, last year, the grades three to five had a big rollout of our EL curriculum product. This is our evidence-based, highly, you know, research-based program to help students develop appropriate literacy skills and to become critical thinkers. It is a program that embeds phonics, structured authen, structured phonics, authentic texts, and as well as some social skills development in terms of executive functioning skills that are appropriate at each one of those developmental levels. So EL is a very thorough curriculum product. It's a very dense curriculum product. Grades three through five rolled it out last year, and as much as K to two is jumping on board this year with their launch, it's important for three to five to continue to revisit at the building level, at the team level, to go back and revisit some modules, really talk about some of those pacing guides, what worked last year, what can be improved this year. And so that's pretty exciting that we'll have a full year at the elementary level of all of our students having this very rich curriculum, so we're pleased about that.
One of the things that we just might, might want to add here, you were aware when we presented the EL curriculum and when we made the selection for the EL curriculum, but as you're here with us this evening tonight, it'd probably be helpful to share that one of the reasons why we've, why we've adopted this new K to five curriculum is because of the way in which they have a commitment to diverse texts. So UDL, Universal Design for Learning, is embedded in the EL curriculum, as is that the texts are incredibly diverse, and that's one of the things that our teachers responded to when we were piloting two different curriculum. So that's something that we're really excited to see, and we've already heard wonderful things from students and families about just the new curriculum and the stories that, that students are reading, which is something that, that we're really happy that it's, that it, that it has worked out that way.
At the middle school level, last year, restorative practices started to be explored at the administration level. So each one of our administrators, the principals and assistant principals, as well as a small group of staff members, participated in some training that took place throughout the year. This year, we're rolling that down to the entire staff, professional staff and support staff at both Stony Brook and Blanchard School. And on November 5th, there'll be a 90-minute overview of the what and why of restorative practices. It will also be followed up by some of the group that worked on it more intimately last year, being able to share how they were able to embed some of those restorative practices into their teaching on a, on a, on a daily basis. So that will be the main focus for middle school. And as well as the district's commitment to the universal design for instruction for UDL, this will continue throughout the year. Westford will be hosting a keynote speaker on November 5th. They will be offering two separate sessions, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. First one for middle and high school, afternoon for our elementary staff members. It will include everybody, professional staff as well as support staff, and we will begin to dig deeper into the student engagement pieces. From there, there'll be many follow-up school-based discussions that take place as a, as a leadership group. Dr. Chu has purchased a book for us that I think that has been shared with you during our summer institute on the UDL playbook, and so really empowering each one of our instructional leaders to take an active role in rolling out UDL into the schools. So that will really be helpful to all of us as we make UDL the fabric for everything that we do with students. Other PD activities that will be taking place this school year, whether it's in those half days or at different opportunities, will be cybersecurity, which we do annually. Our nurses will continue keeping up with their CPR and AED training. The world language department is happy to be going to a national conference. And our Westford Academy guidance counselors continue to do college tours so that they are more in tuned to campus and what might be expected for our students as they transition and can be a, a little bit more of a, a help and a guide. Grief training for school psychologists and counselors. Unfortunately, last year, we had several opportunities in which we really needed to rely on our school psychologist to help us out with some grief training, whether that was families or students that had passed. And so this year, Richard Jane has been pretty vocal in saying, we're going to get this, a more formal training put together, and she has gone out and reached out with several organizations, and that will be available as well on the morning of November 5th. And then finally, special education, as you are aware, the state rolled out a new IEP form, started to roll it out in 2023 with the expectation that all districts would be on board by 2024. This was a very big initiative that Gerard Coughlin took on last year, making sure that all of the staff members are ready to roll in terms of the new IEP, and as well as also learning a new database as we transition from eSped to Power School. So we had a couple double whammies in place there. What's important with special education IEP is that there are several components around, some very big emphasis on transition planning, as well as the integration to any student that might also receive ELL services. And so as the special education teachers become more aware of what they need to do to complete the new IEP and to help inform parents, we're also making sure that everybody who's sitting in those mandatory IEP meetings are strong representatives on the team, whether it's a general education teacher or an ELL teacher, understand what their role is exactly and what our job is in trying to form this new IEP. Finally, our last day, which was going to be a full day, is going to be on May 6th. And last year, our middle school and high school brought back the notion of ed camps, and it was wildly successful. And this is where our, some staff members volunteered their ideas and their times to offer 45-minute segments to each one of the staff members, and then they rotated throughout the, the day. And we were a little sad last year that elementary wasn't able to participate just because we were so invested in the EL curriculum and, and the UFLY at the early, the, the lower levels. So this year, we have made it a priority that all of our district staff members, professional and support staff, will be available for that May 6th date to do ed camps. Brian?
Ed camps, ed camps, ed camps have been around for a little while now, right? And they, they were, they became popular just before the world shut down, right? And then they've been slowly coming back after, after, after we've been coming back from COVID. And the benefit of the ed camp is that it's actually practicing what we're preaching in terms of universal design for learning, where you're giving the professionals choices as to what they might be able to engage in. Because that's one of the, the big ironies in education, is you'll be talking about all these alternative, alternative strategies or different things, but then when it comes down to professional development, you might have a keynote speaker who goes and lectures 300 people. And then we're telling people, that's not quality education, right? So we're trying to figure out how you, how you can balance all of that, which, to the point, when we were talking with CAST, who is going to be, we're engaging with for the keynote speaker on November 5th, that was one of the things we talked about was, okay, we're talking about universal design for learning. You're going to be talking to hundreds of people at one time. What does that look like to you? Because we don't want you to just stand there and give a speech for two hours. And they were great because they clearly, they're the leaders in UDL. So they talked us through how they, even in that environment where, not that lectures aren't effective, because they can be, but figuring out, okay, how do you break that up? How do you then still provide opportunities for turning and talking, for people to be doing small group discussions within the setting? And so the idea, when we, last year, when we were even meeting in one of our And so the idea, when we, last year, when we were even meeting in one of our consult meetings with WEA, you know, one of the things that came up is how disappointed the elementary teachers were that they couldn't participate in the ed camps. Because six through 12 was able to do it, but they were, they were doing all the EL stuff. So the fact that our team has been able to organize the opportunity for the entire district to participate in the ed camps, I think is great.
And this year, Brian Rourke, who is our curriculum coordinator for health and wellness and PE, would like to incorporate a wellness opportunity for staff members. So midday during, while we're, you know, participating in these ed camp sessions, there will be some opportunity for their own personal health and wellness, whether that be yoga or maybe something else. So we'll have a couple of different things that will be hopefully well-received by our staff. And then from time to time, we have other district initiatives that just don't fit into our professional development. And so collaborative problem solving is one that this committee has asked us to take a look at. Some ARPA funds had been allocated to the school. And we have used, we are using those funds as well as using more funds in kind to make sure that what we are doing is robust and thorough and not just a one and done. So this past August, before we welcomed staff and students back, our administrative team participated in an introduction to collaborative problem solving. That same two-hour training is going to be offered to our professional staff members on October 22nd. We are asking, we are hoping for roughly 20 staff members from each school to be able to participate in that event. And then from there, we'll do some debriefing at the school level and identify teams at each elementary school. We're not able to do it middle school and high school, but we're going to focus on elementary school for this year and train at least five people from each of those elementary schools into the essentials foundations of CPS at the Level 1. And so we're pretty excited that that is going to take place. And the, and the principals were thankful for that as well.
That's great news.
Thank you. And finally, our professional development does include our annual training. These are mandated trainings that have to take place each year. And for the third year, Westford is partnering with ArcEd to facilitate the training. And it's been a much better kind of delivery of training. It's all self-paced modules, which include video and infographics, and certainly can take place within an hour's time. So we do make sure that on that first day of school, we are providing that time period for staff members to go through it. But if they need to stop and pause and revisit it at a later date, or even if you've completed all of the courses and at some point later on in the school year, you want to go back and do a revisit, the, the courses are there for you to, to access. And so these are the different topics that are addressed at that level. That's about it. Are there any questions?
I have one question, if that's okay? And just going back to the slide with showing the PD for this year. If memory serves me correct, when we were doing the ARPA funding request, I think there was a plan originally for the restorative practices to start year one at the middle school and then kind of start then the second year in the high school. And I'm just wondering, is there, has there been a shift or a change in that kind of thinking? Or is there a, an update on that?
Well, the restorative practices that I had mentioned was last year, the middle school did it at the administration level. And then this year, they're doing it with
Yeah.
their team. So right now, at the high school level, I'm not, I'll have to speak with Dan about what that rollout might be, but that's not slated for this school year.
There, there will still be, they're still finding teachers who, I'm going to talk about it in the goals section later, right? Where they're using the community circles.
Yeah.
And so teachers at the academy are being exposed to that, and they're going to be piloting that. This is speaking to that next layer of support for the middle school that already has the advisory in place in a different way.
Yeah.
So it is still happening, but this is just the different, the focus for those days. Because one of the things that, when Courtney even mentioned the, the slide about collaborative, collaborative problem solving and saying that that's outside of our professional development. It's not outside of our professional development as much as it's outside of our professional development dedicated time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right? And so Westford Academy, in a similar way, is still sort of looking to find those leaders who want to, who want to pilot the community circles within their classes. And that's not going to be taking place during dedicated professional development time. It's going to have to take place outside of that.
And to stay, stay on the topic of restorative practices, Nina Belf and Sam Holmgren are administrators at NapNasset. When they hosted their back-to-school night last week, they did introduce restorative practices to their families, focusing on, you know, the strengthening connections between students and family members, how to teach problem solving, building empathy, and increasing positive behaviors. So there are administrators who are being sneaky and and getting in a lot of those.
That's awesome. Thanks. And I just want to quickly add before I forget is, as you've touched on EL education, that reminds me to just bring back to the committee that, that the tour is, the morning that's blocked out for the tours, if you're able, is Wednesday, October 9th. And we'll see a schedule soon and a way to sort of split up the interest, interested members to get into the elementary schools and sort of see how that's going.
10:00 AM?
I think that was like
We'll probably start a little earlier than that, yeah.
And the goal is that we, most likely, depending on the number of people, we'll divide into two, two schools, right? So we want to, we want you to see the K to two and the three to five. So we'll have a partner, most likely partner with sister schools. But everybody's not going to see the same thing. They're going to see the same grade levels. But one of the feedback that you shared with us is you wanted to spend more time in less places. So we were thinking, depending on who's available, we have curriculum coordinators who will be ready to guide us probably in two different tours.
As well as hold like a little debrief afterwards to talk about, you know, what, what we saw, or answer any questions. And then would also take that opportunity to talk about the MTSS model and, and how we're providing support to all of the students.
Cool. I have a question, and I think it might be a little out of the scope of the presentation that you just did, Courtney, but so don't, I hope I'm not putting anyone in the hot seat. But I know, I know we've discussed it at some point, which was kind of supporting our newer teachers and, and growing leaders within the district, right? I guess I'm curious, like what, what are we currently doing with that? Like, or is that all happening at the building-to-building level or at the building level? Or is that something that the administration is taking an active role in or?
Well, in, in terms of newer teachers, we still have our ULTA's program, which is the under, wait, Understanding Learners Teaching All Students.
Yes.
Like U L T A. And that is still a, a series of courses that all of our NPS teachers are responsible for participating in. So that's above and beyond this.
Okay.
So those courses take place in the afternoon. New, new teachers, in their first year, they all still have, they all still get a dedicated mentor and go through our mentorship program too. So in terms of the support that we have for our new employees, that has been going on for a while and is, and still continues.
Great.
Which is sort of outside of this. It's not something that we would talk about in this. And another thing that, that, that I think you mentioned, Courtney actually, a couple of years ago, had talked about this and has been able to do this successfully, where she created a sort of mini workshop for aspiring administrators, and specifically because we have such a unique assistant principal role.
Yep.
We were trying to put together, like what, really what should people be aware of? And since we have so many new assistant principals this year, she was able to, again, roll it out this year again. And we invited any of the principals who wanted to participate in some of the, in some of the, that we, she shared all of the different topics, whether it was, you know, different 504 strategies or the, the IEP strategies, or just even the legal workshop that we had on Title IX and all the different things like that. And so a number of our principals were like, oh, actually, I want to participate in that as well too. And we've opened it up to some staff members who are interested in trying to get their administrative certification as well too.
Great.
Yeah. So that's just one example. It's something that I think is, not everybody does that. And I think Courtney did a great job coming up with the idea.
Well, thank you. That's great. Yeah. Because I think like, I mean, just going off of what you were saying, which is, it strikes me that as, you know, the override now passing and stuff, right? Like, we're all acutely aware that we're asking more of our teachers than we have in the past. And I hope that we're, it seems like we're making a concerted effort to keep good talent and to make them feel supported, appreciated, and nourished. So I hope we keep that up.
Yeah, I will say, unfortunately, the majority of the people who, who are new people last year who participated in those ULTA's classes, we let go.
Yep.
So that's a, that, that's a good example, though. That's a year worth of investment. Not only, I mean, in terms of, we would love to keep them. Theirs as well as ours, right? Like, we, we were, we were helping to grow them. Yeah.
Any other questions on professional development? Thank you so much, Courtney. Appreciate it. I'm going to recommend that we move our eight o'clock agenda for a naming committee update and move it to after our goals discussion so that it's right alongside of policies. So that will move us to the superintendent goals.
Okey-dokey. So I shared with you the updated, and it should be, it's in the, is it in the packet? It was in the packet as well too. The updated or revised version of the goals. I, I took the feedback that I heard from you during our last meeting, and I had the opportunity to meet, Sean and Lori were able to meet today specifically. And we had a good conversation about how the goals might become, I guess, maybe more user-friendly? Is a nice way to say it, right? So I've added, one of the, one of the reminders was, we use a lot of acronyms, right? So I had started, I remembered that from last year, and so I started trying to spell them out. But then one of the things I realized is I, I didn't write the goals in order necessarily. So I had spelled out universal design for learning in Goal 2, but I didn't spell it out in Goal 1. So I, I went through it again and tried to make sure I spell out all of those different things before we then use the acronyms later on. And I added a number of links so that someone can see. The first one just being the UDL playbook that we're using. There's a nice, that's a short video where one of the authors is talking about the book and kind of gives people an idea as to what it is. And to that end, one of the things I was thinking about, Courtney, when you even mentioned it, we do have two extra copies of the UDL playbook that I purchased for all the leadership team this year. So if any of you wanted to borrow it and read it, I can loan it to you. Let me know. Reach out to me or Kathy. We have two copies, and so I'd be happy to share them. And it is a really, I think it's a really easy read. It's a, it's a, it's practical. And I think it might be an interesting thing for you to take a look at. And so I added links as to what CAST is, the Think Kids, Pathways to Restorative Communities, kind of showing that information. I also thought it would be helpful to point people to the Massachusetts School Building Authority and what the eligibility phase actually means there. So that's a live link. And then the, the other big adjustment was that I looked at Goal 4, which is the, the two-year goal, the Equity Audit Goal. And I went ahead and I did strike through the things that have been completed, and I said that they were completed. And I, I also just added, because there really would be no way for anybody to know that we actually did engage with the American Institutes for Research. So I just said that right there. And then I added the fourth key action, which is what I was talking to, to Joe and Anjali about, which is the Root Cause Analysis Event, which again, I put it a hyperlink to air so that if people wanted to see what this organization, those are, those are, at this moment in time, they're mere, all of those links are just informational as to what that is. Later on, I'll provide They're not live documents, and they're also not the evidence piece, right? It's literally just sort of context. So if somebody stumbled upon this document, they might be able to have a better understanding as to what it is that we're talking about. But those are the, those are the changes from when we met last time. I think I, I did make a change live during our meeting last time. And I, based on the conversation we were having, and it just was, it was making something more specific. It wasn't, it, it didn't change anything specifically, and I'm struggling to remember what that was, but.
Same.
Right?
Any questions or did you want to add anything from the superintendent evaluation subcommittee discussion?
No, I, I appreciate the superintendent's willing to make some edits on a short, tight deadline. And I think that what we asked of him is reflected in this document, so I appreciate that.
I really liked the expansion actually on those sense of belonging goals about like the common language, you know, and communicating student progress of the UDL and CPS. I think that'll be really impactful within the community and families, so.
I was just going to say, as a new member of the committee, I really appreciate spelling out the acronyms. I deal with so many acronyms myself that it can get confusing. So even, I can imagine a member of the public, reading this for the first time, will be able to understand. I also really appreciate the reference links. It, it just, again, makes it a little bit more transparent and helps to gain understanding as, as we look at these, so.
I will appreciate every reminder to spell things out. Both of my parents work for the government, so I grew up at the dining room table, listening to just a conversation of acronyms. And they knew exactly what they were talking about. And my brother and I were just like, oh, okay, well, I don't know what that means, but that was okay. So it, it just, for some reason, they just don't seem to faze me. So I need people to be, hey, what does that mean?
Right. We need a glossary page on the school committee.
I just wanted to bring up, so as you know, my favorite thing about goals is thinking about the evidence, right? Like, and for Lori and Tom, in the spring when we were putting together the evaluation, it's one of the, sort of our evolutions of this process has been thinking ahead to say, what are we going to see? And in particular, are there any goals that are difficult for us as the public to see or the committee to see? No, I think a lot of them, we've gotten really good at, right?
Or better.
Yes. We've improved. And I think a lot of them lend themselves to, you know, we're going to see a utilization report. We're going to see action items from an equity audit. We're going to see a survey from the sense of belonging goal. The first goal I still, I just wanted to touch on, which is what, when you, when I see the success criteria of educator feedback, which is not our level of
Correct.
And then also like principals modeling strategies in faculty meetings. Again, a level that we're not privy to.
Right.
So I just wanted to touch there and see if, if there's, if you've thought at all about what that might look like as evidence.
So the principal, the, the principal and curriculum coordinators modeling the engagement strategies, while you wouldn't necessarily see that in the faculty meetings, when I, when I drafted that, I was thinking, that is something that I could potentially share tangible evidence of. Yes, from, it, it could be, it could be sharing with you literally a slideshow that one of, that we know that they use at the faculty meeting, right? Or something to that effect.
Okay.
But it, interestingly, and I appreciate that you asked that, because that was one of the things that Lori asked today, right? When, it was the, it was the, one of them was talking about communicating something. And so she said, what, you know, what does that mean and what is the plan? And so I said, well, actually, I don't know what that is. But what I know is that the success criteria says that it was communicated. So that means, at the end of the year, I'm going to have to prove to you that it was communicated. I don't know how I'm going to do that yet, right? But I, but it was a good conversation because she asked the question. I said, honestly, I don't know what that looks like yet. But I do know that now that we have the success criteria, which honestly, for Lori and Tom's benefit, we didn't have a couple of years ago. And so now that we're actually saying, what should it look like or what does that mean? I at least feel like that's a new target.
Okay.
That then, but it does, I think it's important for anyone to also have leeway as to what that might look like as we develop, as we move along.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I just, I feel like the professional practice goal will continually lend itself to that. And I I just, I feel like the professional practice goal will continually lend itself to that
Yeah.
tension, right?
Yep.
Because it is personnel-related or operations-related that.
I mean, I will say, in both of these, and one of the things I did think of, because even as it, the the educator feedback, though, and my thought, and we'll see with whether, how this plays out or not, but my thought with that is the 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 engagement tool that we're using is not evaluative. Okay? So my goal is to be able to collect and show you that data, because names won't be attached to it. So you'll be able to see that people are responding similarly to certain things. If I feel like it's identifiable, I'll either redact it or then decide I can't use it, but I'll figure out another way to share it with you.
Even if you just were able to share statistics that, you know,
Matters.
seventy-five percent responded, right?
Right, right.
You know, the bare minimum that that's, yes, I I've engaged.
But to Valerie's point, like, in my first year, one of the things, one of the goals was just even about the evaluations of individuals and my ability to coach and mentor the principals, right? And like, I can't share your, their evaluations with you, right? So like, those are things that it became like this, okay, well, how do we know that feedback is being provided?
Right.
Right.
That sounds great. And and I appreciate the squeezing in the evaluation subcommittee. That was a cadence that we found helpful last year. Obviously, you know, a fresh subcommittee is welcome to find their own rhythm. You know, we will do a mid-year review for a business meeting, and then obviously a presentation in the spring with evidence. And however, the evaluation subcommittee wants to schedule themselves, maybe even picking dates way in advance or something.
We did do that today, too.
We had a date in January.
Yeah, we talked about meeting before that mid-year.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
I hope, Dr. Chu, you find us helpful as well, that, you know, kind of this cadence, as you said, that we've put in place in terms of making it all cohesive and collaborative and stuff, and that you're still finding benefit, now that you're officially out of the
Right.
new superintendent.
Right.
Program.
Insep, yeah. No, you you didn't make that up, yeah. The, having the subcommittee, I think, is fantastic.
Awesome.
Right? Because that that definitely really helps, and the way in which we've gone about it. The overall process itself is just still a lot, you know, for everybody. But I I do really believe that it's gotten more manageable and more concise isn't necessarily the right word, but maybe it is. Coherent. It's just got more manageable and more coherent, I think, each year, which I think is helpful, yeah.
That's awesome.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the superintendent's goals for school year twenty-four, twenty-five.
So moved. Second?
Sorry, Bill, I didn't miss any input, right?
No, no.
Thank you. All those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And we'll see those around January.
January.
So we can, we can post these now as the approved
Correct.
goals.
Thank you. Um, school committee goals.
Is there a PDF one? Do you want me to pull it up?
No, it's just a live Google Doc still, because it's open for feedback still. So you'll see a note I sent you all, you know, right under eleventh hour. It's all the same meat of action items we've been talking about for the last two weeks, and that sort of originated in a retreat in the summer. I wordsmithed a thousand different times in a thousand different ways, the goal wording and the success criteria. But like I said, the action items is still referring to the same things to each place. A lot of them, I think, are really already on their way, right? Start times is is cranking. We have a draft of the, well, a initial draft of the revolving fund guidelines that we've started to review. Executive minutes started reviewing last week. Kathy and I have been looking at the committee website. So I think it's gonna be, it's a, it looks like a lot. When I read it, my shoulders climb up a little bit, but I think it's gonna be a lot of good work this year.
Many hands make light work, so we all take, do our part.
Yeah. Any feedback, questions, discussion, school committee goals? I don't know, wanna stall until Sean comes?
Well, I think one of the things as well to kind of say is, you know, school committee goals are, you know, they're kind of a funny goal in the sense, like, some of them are, like, very much like housekeeping, you know?
Well, and that's, I think, a, you know, not a, not an insignificant part of our role, right?
Exactly.
Is that our organization sort of lends itself to the continuity of the committee, of new people coming on every other year, and you know, and and we have some legal obligations to reviewing things like executive session minutes, so.
No, it's sort of boring.
It doesn't light anybody up to talk about session, executive session minutes from twenty nineteen, but also necessary, so.
But I think it's a way of kind of like establishing, like, what are best practices, you know, being mindful of, you know, at some point in the future, maybe all seven committee members will all be, like, full-time working, you know, people and and trying to think what's sustainable longer term, but, yeah, so.
Okay, if there's no feedback or edits suggested, I'll take a motion to approve our school committee goals.
So moved.
And a second?
One second.
All in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Catherine? Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And you will also see those come back around January for a little mid-year check-in. Okay, so we'll do a quick naming committee update that will tie into the next agenda item of policy updates.
Sure. Okay.
Whoever wants to.
Yeah, why don't I speak for a little bit as to how we got at our policy committee? So the last time all seven were together, one of the questions that we were I guess, asked to address is whether or not we were interested in suspending a specific policy, seven-two-one-one, to name a subsection of Westford Academy after a individual and long servant to our Westford schools. So there were some issues that were raised and completely valid concerns regarding whether or not that's a good practice to suspend a policy. And this policy, I think, had been on the policy subcommittee's radar for quite some time. So this seemed like a good opportunity for the policy subcommittee to get together and to evaluate. That being said, that seven-two-one-one and some proposed amendments are going to be introduced tonight. I'm gonna ask that we postpone any discussions as to the the naming of the subsection of WA until seven-two-one-one is ironed out, and we can come to a consensus on that. So that's the the update. So I'm gonna, I I know we had kind of alluded to the public that we were interested in having a vote tonight, so I'm gonna request that we don't have that vote.
Everybody understand where we're going? Okay, so then we'll move into the policy subcommittee update, and thank you.
And, okay, so we're doing something a little bit different, and I think I kind of explained it all, I hope, in the emails that came out of our policy meeting the other day. We're kind of building the plane as we fly a little bit this time out. One of the reasons being that, I think, of our conversation in our school committee meeting was that, you know, suspending policies versus not, but also being aware that there is a request out there that had a bit of a timeline in mind, I believe, for in the rainfall in some, at some stage. So we were trying to be mindful of that and kind of went back and looked at that particular policy. The warrants also, the approval of warrants, P three-five-oh-five. It's a very small policy in terms of words.
It's brief.
It's very brief. And what we did was, because there's been a shift in payroll timelines, the signing, the signatures required for the signing of the warrants isn't necessarily kind of lining up with our school committee meetings and is now kind of potentially requiring four members of the committee to get to central office at some point or whatever. So the policy subcommittee kind of dived into all of this last week, and we came up with the idea of, let's do a very brief draft and put it up for our first reading tonight, and actually start taking the feedback and really working on it kind of in real time as it's up for public comment and going through our three-meeting process for when we're changing policies. And so I'm happy to kind of talk through each one, to kind of give you, explain kind of what we're thinking, the overview. I don't know if we have to waive the first reading first before we do that or not. I can never remember.
Well, if you can't remember, then we're in trouble, but I think that probably sounds safe.
Okay.
So I'll move to waive the first reading of both P three-five-oh-five and P seven-two-one-one. A second, please.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of waiving the reading? Tom?
Aye.
Mari?
Sorry. Aye.
Blame Bill.
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you.
Okay. So let's discuss P three-five-oh-five, the approval of warrants. So as you'll see in the packet, and I did send out that informational email to you this afternoon, I also included a copy of the MASC model policy language. So our current policy suggests we have four signatures. Looking at the MASC model policy first, and actually looking at the MGL, it says you only need one signature. In some of the research I did, looking at other districts and how they've interpreted the policy, the majority of them, I think Chelmsford was the only one I came across that required three. Any of the other districts I had were still either looking for one or two. And it depended on the district who they were saying. So some had the chair and the superintendent as signatures, others just had the chair. Another district had a secretary. Another district, it was just the school committee nominated one person for the year, wasn't necessarily a designated position. So it's really open to us, A, if that's something we are interested in changing, that signatures for the warrants, and also then B, if we want to just approve the role of, to say, the chair, or that we would choose a person for the year. I have to say, I was kind of thinking, you know, in one sense, making it the chair kind of felt right, because that role typically represents the school committee. So I I felt it, it could be a good way to go, so whoever is chair would take on that potential, or their designee, which is the alternative option we were saying. If that person who's typically due to sign the warrants can't make it, or they're sick, whatever, there is a person dedicated to filling in the gaps.
Right.
As an alternate. As an alternate, yeah.
So this would be a pretty big change from our existing fault practice, which is, you know, we've had the binders over there, of course, when people sign them, the, they show up with an amount and a date on our agenda, we vote on that, and then we sign. The new sort of cadence of that would be that they're not ready until the Tuesday after our meetings, which is be, which will be a problem. We wouldn't have an amount on a Monday night meeting. And so to keep up with, to meet our current policy for people, and it actually happened like two weeks ago, and it has to happen again this week, so excuse my late, my late notice.
I don't mind.
But I've been texting members asking to stop by Millennium and sign outside of a meeting. And so to meet our current policy, we would have to keep doing that. It's also been come up, it's come up a couple of times in the past that we've, that we've seen this practice in other districts, and should consider moving to that where, so in the future, if 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 we follow this suggestion, one person would need to come to central office unless we also sort of are also investigating an electronic signature. But one person signs it, and then it would still make it to our agenda. So that's the important part, is that it doesn't abdicate all seven of us of the responsibility of sort of vouching for these warrants and payroll and expenses. It would be added to the next agenda, sort of as an after the fact, sort of how we do, like, the summer, right? Like, somebody signed it all summer, and then they're all listed in August or September.
Yeah, the responsibility very much still lies with all seven members to be aware of it and keeping a members.
It's not like a, it's not like a hands-off
No.
site on Zine.
Yeah.
I personally would not necessarily tie it to a role, only because I think the availability of it is different. And maybe this flushes out in the next two weeks, maybe, as we think about electronic signature. But it's possible in the future that somebody who is chair is available for agenda setting in that sort of role, but is not necessarily available to stop by during business hours. So I I would lean more towards just a single member and engaging it based on someone's availability and schedule.
It also allows the full committee to change that person during the year, if need be, based on this policy, because it doesn't, it's not time-bound.
No.
Right. Right.
But, Tom?
I I'm, as I'm reading this, I'm just struggling with the and designee. I don't know if alternate is a better word.
Typically, in policy, that's the word you use for for that.
Yeah, I've I've always kind of read designee as, oh, well, I'm not available this week, so I'm going to just
Ask.
ask someone else, as opposed to having the committee have that input. So that that was the only thing that really kind of stood out to me. The only other question, and this is logistically, right now, the warrant can't act, like, the checks can't be paid without four signatures, correct? So we're voting on it, signing it, and then the che- checks are cut. Except you're saying that currently we're off that cadence anyway, so we're getting the signatures.
No, so currently, we've been meeting it just manually.
Right, but we're not necessarily voting on it before the, we're not voting on it as a committee right now anyway, before the signatures are.
It's been coming to us, like, this one that's on today from September nineteen, yes, did get signed.
Right, okay, so so it's not changing, per se, our practice, maybe just the way the policy is written right now, so. I just, I can't see an example of one we would not approve a payment to be made, because I would hope that we would know something's coming before that point anyway, so.
I do have one question, and that's, I'm gonna ask Jenny if that's okay, because I, does the designee aspect violate the MGL? Because the MGL allows you to do one. You can establish one, or one has.
At least one is my understanding. I'll pull it up again.
Right, but if it's only gonna be one, yeah, we we just had a conversation about that today, because we knew that our previous, our current policy is more restrictive, which you can be more restrictive, in that you, we were saying you had to have four people sign it.
Yeah.
But if it's gonna be one, then it has to be the one person designated, and so I'm I'm curious if single member and designee, if that's, if that's violating the MGL. Does that make sense, my question?
No, I understand what you're saying.
So.
You know what I'm saying, Jenny?
Yep.
So to be clear, you're you're questioning whether or not it's one or the other, as opposed to?
If you're just gonna have one, I think as a committee, you have to say it's one. Because one of the things that used to happen, which we found we couldn't do, is even in the summer, it used to be, who could these people be that could come and sign the warrants? And so we learned that that, we can't do that. It has to, if the committee's going to designate one, you can only designate one. Whereas our.
In this past June, we did it, like, by date. We said, like, I was the, I was the authorizing, authorized member for these dates, and Sean was the authorized member for this date. And that was it. In the past, we've done, oh, these two people are our summer warrant signers.
So it it would potentially be, instead of having and designee, it would be maybe the first meeting of the month, we're saying, oh, well, this month, I'm just gonna use the example. Valerie's not available on this date, so we have to vote for someone for the month, or?
I don't know. I'm not sure.
I'm just curious.
I would be curious, and and this is, I think, part of a great discussion
Yeah.
for this particular example, which is that the policy subcommittee is helping us by For this particular example, which is that the policy subcommittee is helping us by working it alongside this. And so, our feedback is really real-time.
Right.
Yeah.
As, as you can see by Catherine's curious notes. And I guess I would just ask if there's, and if we can try to check in with another district.
Yeah, we'll do.
Just to see like, like you said, it feels very restrictive. So, what do they do if it's one person that's been designated and that person is sick? Or that person goes on vacation? I mean, it, it feels like a bit of pressure.
I thought we saw another district that had to.
Yeah, no, they're, they're.
To always be available to.
I'm, I'm also curious as to how this plays out, if it's, how, how is this different than what the select board needs to do? Because I know that there's different rules, but the, the select board, I don't believe, is voting on a warrant and all of them signing some, so.
No, I believe that's a diff, part of the difference between town manager and town administrator, form of government.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm reading this general law fifty-two, or I'm sorry, subsection fifty-two.
Yeah.
Chapter forty-one. I, I mean, it all applies, Chris raised a really good point, this is written to apply to select boards, so. I don't know, I, I would say that we just model our practice after that and make it what's easiest for us to do.
Yeah.
Maybe change the and to an or designee. If there's concern about allocating too many people to that role.
And there's always the, if we have a question about it, you know, throwing it up to council just to make sure we're in compliance before we approve a, a policy.
And I just remember reminding myself too, that Jenny checked in with the auditor and confirmed that e-signature is acceptable from their point of view.
Yeah, other districts do that, yeah.
As long as the committee is sort of approving that change of method.
And that was actually another question, I was kind of curious as, I actually think we should probably add that to our policy, if that's something we're accepting. So, if you're okay, we might work on some of that language, on the e-signature.
And if that's the case, I guess it does lend its, it, it opens the door to tying it to a role. I was just worried about having a role and this sort of time-bound, somebody has to physically come by between Tuesday and Thursday. But if we're going to change to e-signature, maybe it does make sense to just have it.
It also then potentially kind of ends the question on the designee, if you know that one person is able to sign it no matter what.
Well, but there, there's still a, not no matter what, right?
Right, there's always something.
They get hit by a bus, true.
Or, or go on vacation to rural Maine and, you know, I'm on vacation, I'm not taking my stuff with me type thing, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is, is that a scenario where then if your, if your policy says that it's a role? And then you have another, you say someplace else what the responsibilities of that role is. Then for, if, let's just say you made it the chair, then when the committee votes on who the chair is, the assumption is that this is all taking place. And if the vice-chair is responsible for filling the duties of the chair, if the chair's not, I would think that that would then be included, right?
That was somewhat of my thinking originally, to kind of just establish it as a kind of an ongoing practice.
Yeah, now that I remembered, the auditor gave the A okay on the e-signature, I think that would probably be the way to go.
The only, the only other thing I was just gonna throw out there is just, as we're having this conversation, that we're, it seems like this is a very complicated thing. If you have questions as to why we're doing this, the, the, we've, what, what has been happening for a long time has not necessarily been the best practices in the way the payroll has been established. And so, what we've done is now corrected, it's a better, it's a, it's a, it's a better schedule for the payroll. But unfortunately, it comes with this.
Wrinkle.
Wrinkle and, and complication. But what it does on the other end is it actually makes everything better for payroll, for the process, for employees, for efficiency. And it allows people to, you know, make sure that i's are dotted and t's are crossed and in a much better way.
And ultimately, with a bi-weekly payroll, you end up off-cycle periodically anyway, because we have three payroll months. And we only have two meetings in a month or whatever, so.
Just coming back on that, the MGL, I knew I'd seen it somewhere, so in, I think it's the forty-one fifty-six. It does say that for the, for the purposes of the section or head of department consisting of more than one member authorized to expend money. May designate any one of its members to approve all bills, draft orders, and payrolls, provided however, that the member shall make available to the board committee or other department head at the first meeting following such action.
That doesn't seem like and designee.
It's, but it says may designate any one of its members. So, it's not saying, here's the lovely thing of may versus shall, so you can, but you don't have to.
But I read that as, we could do it the way we have been doing it.
Yeah.
Or you could do it this way.
Yeah, yeah.
One or, we can't pick.
We could pick two, I assume.
No.
Oh, sorry, okay.
You may pick one, a, as opposed to seven or four.
Well, the other thing is, is that we've never picked four specific people with our signatures either, it's whoever, it was just whoever had four signatures.
I don't think that matters.
But the idea there is that that's a quorum of the committee.
Right, true.
And so, I think what's happening is that it's, it's, it's talking about, is it the quorum of the committee?
Yeah.
Or are you allowing one person to do this? You're not, there is no two, right, or three, anything less than a quorum, and it's just, I mean, I guess why would anybody do that?
So, I think it, in that reading, I would say it's one person, and then if there's gonna be some conflict, then we have to vote a replacement.
In the order, in the, in the, oh my gosh, what's the word, in the spirit of efficiency, this is giving direction to the policy subcommittee. So, we could make the recommendation, it sounds like sort of consensus, that we can make that the chair, make it a single member, include e-signature.
Yeah.
And I.
That's it.
Yeah.
I think that covers everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then I guess to Chris's point, that, and the provision that the chair fills in for, I mean, the vice-chair fills in for the chair, that's kind of.
I feel like at the end of the day, that what people wanna see is that you have clear policy that says who can do this.
Yeah.
And so, if you, yeah, if, if it's, if it's established that the vice-chair's filling the roles of the chair in the chair's absence, then, and you've already established that the chair is the person who does this. Then, in essence, it's not the person, but it is the role, and that person just stepped into the chair for two weeks.
Right, okay.
Loving this. Does the policy subcommittee need any other input on E three five oh five?
Yeah, no, hold, hold your horses, we'll be back to you to be continued. Really excited about this section.
That was the easy one.
I know. And so, now jumping into our lovely P seven two one one school naming policy. So, like we said, we kind of made the decision to kind of suspend the process of moving forward on the naming requests that we've had while we focused on this policy. I, I think actually as well, Sean, you had also said it was, it was a nice way to make sure that, you know, we were completely behind, you know, the policy. And then kind of moving it forwards and to not kind of create any, you know, kind of doubts or whatever, because that's not the, what took away about, from the committee the last time we were speaking specifically about the request. And I think we, we all kind of agreed at that in the meeting, that that made a lot of sense. So, the, it's a bit of a messy document you got, but that's just the nature of policy in work. And I did also send you through the model MASC policy. And I also did send you through the Westford Town Monuments and Memorials Committee policy too, because I thought that was an interesting thing to look at. In the MASC model policy and all the surrounding town kind of research policies we looked at, none of them had naming go-to-town meetings at all. It all stayed within the authority of school committee. Actually, I really liked the MASC model policy, I felt it was a little bit more, you know, brief and a snapshot of a more concise policy. So, the question's really kind of to grapple with is, we, as the policy kind of said, well, you know, looking back, the, a very original policy that we had before this newer one said that it had to go to town meeting, we don't necessarily know why it was established. We did feel it obviously kind of ties you to something. So, the question was to kind of get a sense of, do we still want to keep that in, but say the school committee may go to town meeting if they want? But knowing that the other side of it is that that doesn't happen on the town side within Westford. Or do we just want to kind of go with what's considered best practice on school committee side and looking at what's already happening in surrounding towns and districts? In that the school committee has the authority in that naming process. Now, the processes in the final decision, the process then is kind of two ways, again, as we said. If we know we're getting a new building and we've decided we want to look at, you know, putting a name on that building, you create the naming committee and it follows through. You put the members on and so forth. The other flip side of it in that policy, and we've kind of added some of that language in, is essentially in this request, the community has come to the school committee with the request and what the, kind of the model policy language was saying, that in that instance, you would want the request to have the approval of the school, the PTO, the, potentially the school advisory committee, so that they were all on board as a community, as a school community, putting this request through to the school committee. And then the school committee would still then kick in the naming committee to have those kind of meetings and make that recommendation to the school committee for the final say.
I would add that would be surveyed all the towns surrounding Westford and some that were beyond what are there. That none of them had the town meeting involved.
Not even mentioned. It's just not in the policy, I guess.
One of the things, so Valerie was saying earlier about, you know, honoring like the work of past boards and like looking at why they would do things and like being part of continuity. And so, one of the things I was thinking about while you were talking, Catherine, is that if we don't have it go to town meeting, and I don't really, you know, I'm trying to just think about it in a context of like, that's what folks had put in there. Is there another way to make it, like in the spirit of what other folks were hoping to do? And so, one way of thinking about that, and people can hate this idea, but instead of having it just be like a majority of votes, that the vote would have to be unanimous of the school committee in order to, so in one way, it's like you don't take it to town meeting, but instead of just having it be a majority of the school committee, that it would have to be a unanimous decision of the school committee in order to enact it.
Is that, is that honoring?
Like the spirit of what folks were trying to do before, so that it's not, it wouldn't be something that would go forward over a divided school board. But that it would be like.
I do, actually.
Like, you might hate this, and I like it.
I would like to also add that there, there is history of town buildings going to town meeting. The Rogers Fire Station actually is the most recent, so that's the case of a brand-new building. You know, I do think that a building, a school, for example, should go before town meeting, because that is a significant expenditure on the town side, on the taxpayer side. So, I, I do think that it's almost putting too much power in, in seven people. So, so, you know, I, I struggle with that too, that there's, there is a community investment as well as a school investment.
I understand, because I would have thought the same, and then actually in my research, I came across a town recently, Concord. And they had a very divisive process of just that, the school committee wanted actually to just call it, I believe, the Concord Middle School. And a group presented a name, and I believe it created a lot of divisiveness in the town. And I kind of sat back and kind of thought about, you know, especially seeing how even the override debate happened in Westford, you know. How would we feel having potential students walking into a middle school or a high school building, possibly being already divided on that name as well? And kind of potentially creating those issues, and I, I, I mean, I can totally see your point as well. But I kind of sat back and, and said, we're seven members of the community, we all have very different backgrounds, we all have very different friends. And I'd also like to think that, you know, the people are electing school committee members that are kind of representative of their views. And also, it's not like it happens in a bubble, you still have to do public comment, there's still feedback.
We have the naming committee.
We have the naming committee and stuff.
Members of the community involved.
And the other thing is, is if we don't do the majority vote, like Mari was suggesting, we can still leave the line in there that says the school committee may take that, may take that vote to town meeting, if it is for a new building.
How, when you say the school committee, like what's the criteria for that? And who gets to decide, like if, if two people feel really strongly that it should go to town meeting, but five people don't, then it's not going to town meeting.
Well, then it doesn't go to town meeting, yeah.
So, it's kind of like moot.
But then it wouldn't be unanimous in that scenario either, right?
Yeah, well, that's why, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's what you're, you're proposing, quasi-proposed amendment.
My quasi-proposed amendment would be unanimous vote.
I just wanted to add to this conversation, which is in the model policy, there's a line that caught my eye, which is whenever possible, the wishes of the community should be considered in naming school facilities.
Yeah.
So, I wonder if that captures some of what we're talking about too, to add that in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess going back to Catherine's example, I'd, I'd be concerned that, you know, there was, you know, sentiment within the seven people on this board, whatever that makeup was, that a name was suitable for a building, but then, you know, there was the outside. And then you do have students walking into a building that they're not proud of that name, for, for lack of a better term, so. Yeah, I, I just.
We don't have to come up with a decision tonight, I mean, that's the nice thing, this is also, we're still working it out, so let us mull it over and.
I, I will just throw out there that, to both of your points, right? If, if a decision is made seven-oh, even if there's people in the community who don't necessarily like it, it would be less divisive than if it won at town meeting by two votes.
Right. I, I actually, I feel like the.
I like the idea of the unanimous thing is, is very interesting, yeah.
Division sometimes happens when the authority isn't clear.
Yeah.
So, if the policy says the buck stops with the school committee, like full stop, I think that's where we avoid some of that theoretically.
And it's, and I think folks can reach out to school members if they don't think that it should be a unanimous vote. And I think if the school committee is hearing from voters, that if a school committee member's hearing from their constituents, then hopefully they would be the voice for the vote.
We would be inviting public comment, so that that would be happening anyway. And also, possibly getting a school advisory committee and, and other school-related, you know, groups involved in the naming of schools and stuff.
I think the only other comment I would have is to look at that history. And if some subset, building, whatever, was voted at town meeting for a renaming, I think it may be wisest to bring it back to the authority that, that named it in, in the first place. If, if we had, again, something that was voted at town meeting for a committee to go against a town meeting vote is never a popular or a good look.
I had a curiosity, have we ever voted for a school building at town meeting?
We have voted on gymnasiums at town meeting. I, I mean, I haven't been here for a, a building, but.
There's also been, there's also been.
Controversy of.
There's been, there's been controversy over school buildings in our, not to, distant past.
Yeah.
And then, but there's also been precedent, I, I should say, a community member actually did send us a breakdown of some minutes that had referenced this. And if it didn't make it to the whole committee, I'll make sure those are circulated. There is precedent for subsections not going to town meeting. The last time that a building name was suggested by the school committee, it did go to town meeting. And actually, I don't think that school committee voted on it. It's complicated, but the, a bill, a building, a, a building name did go to town meeting and subsections of schools in the past have not gone to town meeting. So, I think it's a mixed bag.
Yeah, I think that's a point of, of revisiting the policy, that it hasn't been clear in the past.
Yeah.
And I guess I kind of disagree that I. And I guess I kind of disagree, that I think it doesn't really matter what led to the names we currently have, if we're gonna, like, this is the chance to get behind a policy that moves us whole, moves us like from this point forward.
Yeah.
And so if if something changed, I think it just refers to this exact policy.
Yeah, I I will just say, I was surprised when you shared that not, that other naming things in town don't have the same criteria, and I feel like as a school committee, you should be, you should be able to do the same things that other groups are able to do as well, too, you shouldn't, you shouldn't necessarily have to be treated differently. That's a thing to consider.
And in, as much as I love town meeting, and I do love town meeting, there are things that town meeting is very good at.
Yeah.
There are things that it's not so good at. And I I think us as seven democratically elected officials in a representative government, you know, we serve a purpose, and we're we're bound by a few things, not to mention that we can be voted out of office at any point, or a recall could happen, so.
And I think we-
Those who are concerned about rogue boards, I, you know, I'd be more, I'm equally as concerned of rogue town meetings, because it doesn't take a lot of people to show up and to get one vote.
And I think to that, to that point, I think that we're saying that we think the school committee can have a very thoughtful process, right? Like, we've alluded to that there would be public comment, that there would be outreach-
Going for weeks.
Yes.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's not happening overnight.
It would not be like in the shadow of the night, the school committee renamed a building, right? Like, that's not what we're talking about, so I I I think you make a good point, Sean, that like, we're we're sort of entrusting ourselves and future committees with a controlled, thoughtful process.
I mean, the other thing that kind of strikes me is, we've, as a town, have also been having the conversation of, how do we take, make town meeting more accessible? We're constantly hearing from families about how all day on a Saturday is just so difficult and tricky, and especially for families who are the very community that we represent. So if, you know, if they're struggling to get to town meeting for something like this.
It's hard for a lot of people.
Yeah, and I'm conscious of, for the sake of the community as well, I don't think we should be throwing everything up onto town meeting either to, for, you know, in the spirit of efficiency and-
Shorter the town meeting, the better.
The shorter the town meeting, the better, yeah.
And certainly, there are times where something might merit that, and I think Marisol's point takes care of a lot of those concerns, so I I personally, I I would suggest that we, that the policy committee meet, I think what we've proposed is a a good start, let's hear what the community has to say, and-
Are you gonna, are you guys thinking to amend it with the unanimous component?
Do, what's, well, actually, Catherine, can you reflect on, what what would next steps be, like, do we have to, if we were to make an amendment like that, would that have to be done tonight, or would we be talking next meeting?
No, no, so-
We wouldn't vote on it until the twenty eighth.
Right.
Yeah, so when we, we're meeting on Wednesday, we'll take the feedback from tonight, we will possibly rework, probably rework some of the wording, and then on our next school committee meeting, when we're still up for discussion, we can still share that feedback, so we can, and even as we're getting public comments, we can make tweaks along the way before we take a vote.
What I hear in Sean's question, though, is, how does the public react to a live change in this process? Is that what you were asking, or did I-
No, that's a great question, though.
Take you once.
That's what I thought.
That's a good question.
Right, so like-
I'll take credit for it, though.
If we're gonna say, if if there's consensus around adding Mari's suggestion about a unanimous vote, but the policy that's up for public comment doesn't have that, how do we, how do we get public comment on that?
We can put, we can, if we tweak it, we could put a, we could keep it up there for public comment, and that, because we often close public comments and make final tweaks on the final policy that we vote on.
Yeah. We're not bound by-
We're not bound by it.
We're taking it in.
Yeah.
It's my public comment.
This is your, exactly.
You're gonna say you're adding, you're not changing anything yet, you're just, this is, you're just hoping to forget about it.
And what, what may happen is, the final version that we come up with on the night of the vote, if we are getting feedback from people that they don't like it, we may choose not to vote on it that night, or you may choose to vote against it that night, or whatever, so we're kind of literally building the plane as we fly.
Okay.
Do you feel like the policies of the committee has what it needs?
I do, yeah.
There's the quorum.
Great, thank you.
Okay. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Your adjourn.
Thank you, in a second.
Seconds.
Tom?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.